No adjustments.
So moved? Aye.
And opposed like sign, there's my microphone. Motion carries. All right, up next will be staff introduction and recognition.
There we are. Mayor and Town Councils, it's a pleasure to be with you all this afternoon. The economic development has grown by 100%, right? So we're now from one person to two, and it is my pleasure to introduce you all to Amanda Lewis. Amanda Lewis comes from, most recently, from the Qatar Regional Council of Governments, and she'll be heading up our marketing, research, and business retention and expansion activities. She's joined us in October and has really been hitting the ground running. It's been an incredible addition to the department, and we're really looking forward to having her onboard and getting some things done. This comes at a great time, as you all most recently approved our strategic plan back on the 20th of October. So we've got a lot of work in front of us, and it's fantastic now to have someone to share that fun with. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amanda and let her say a few words about herself.
Hello, everyone. I'm actually a resident of the town of Clayton, so it's a great opportunity to serve where I also reside. My background is with, I graduated from North Carolina State University with a degree in biological sciences with interdisciplinary focus in communications. And I really look forward to providing my skills and past experiences in professional career to serving the town which I live in. Thank you all.
Awesome. Well, welcome. We're glad you're here. Thank you, Joe.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Town Council. My name is Sean Mazel. I'm the procurement contracts manager here at the town. And today, I'm pleased to introduce April Espinal, who has joined the town's procurement division. She began in the 1st of October. April was raised here in Clayton, continues to call Clayton home, and brings a strong passion for serving this community. She holds an associate's degree in business administration from Johnston County Community College and brings over 13 years of finance and procurement experience from Johnston County Government. April is highly skilled in the P-card administration, which we definitely need, and also in vendor setup. She's been very good at doing that. And one of the big things is she's very good in our financial ERP New World Systems, where she's been a lot of help with doing that also. She's been a tremendous asset to our procurement team. So I'm excited to have April onboard. Her willingness to learn and her initiative in talking, taking on the challenging aspects of procurement make her a welcome addition to our organization. Please join me in welcoming April Espinal to the town of Clayton.
Welcome.
So if you have any procurement questions, you don't have to contact me. You can contact April now. Thank you all.
Fantastic. Welcome, April.
Good evening. Lee Barbie, Deputy Town Manager. I'd like to introduce Matt Proctor, our new electrical director. Matt came onboard November the 3rd. Yeah, November 3rd. Matt has 24 years' experience in the electrical industry, serving several key roles in his career. He most recently worked with Electric Cities from North Carolina. He served as manager of settlements and lead energy data analyst, overseeing billing, energy data analysis, reporting for municipal utility members. Prior to that, he held multiple roles with the City of Rocky Mount Energy Resources, progressing from electric lineman to load management supervisor, and ultimately serving as interim head of the engineering division. Matt is well-known for his ability to lead teams, enhance processes, and implement practical and efficient solutions. His background spans from engineering, data analytics, project management, and he consistently uses data-driven strategies to plan system improvements, monitor costs, and support efficient daily operations. With a strong attention to detail, problem-solving skills, and commitment to public service, Matt is well-positioned to guide the electoral department to providing reliable, resilient, and innovative service for our Clayton community. His leadership in driving process improvements will further strengthen the department's operations and support to continued excellence in service delivery. I'd like to welcome Matt aboard and give him just a minute to speak.
Thank you, Lee, for the warm welcome, warm introduction. Super happy to join the town of Clayton. As Lee mentioned, been working in the electric industry for about 24, 25 years now. Absolutely thrilled to be here. I feel like Clayton has all the right ingredients and is ripe for opportunity. And eager to get to work with our GIS outage management and SCAD and all the various, and the processes that Lee mentioned. So, super happy to be here. Thank you.
Welcome, Matthew. All right, thank you all so much. Up next, under items for discussion, will be the golf cart ordinance review.
I'll go ahead and kick this off while Chief and Lieutenant LaQuire and the team jump up. This is a follow-up to the discussion we had at the work session, I believe, in September regarding looking at a way to formalize what has been longstanding need from an ordinance perspective with golf carts on the roads here in Clayton. Over the past few months, the police department has worked with the town attorney's office to develop a proposal for you all to consider. We've had some back and forth with some of the residents that would be affected or that were interested in this particularly. So this is the culmination of those conversations, and I'll turn it over to Chief Tark for additional conversation.
Thank you, Rich. So a few months ago, we went before you at work session and discussed the first golf cart ordinance that the town has ever had. This is a direct result of a considerable amount of complaints that we receive yearly, mainly from the Glen Laurel community. And I won't say it's confined to the summertime, but that's the biggest part of it, when kids are out of school. And the biggest problem we've had is underage kids operating golf carts, creating traffic problems and potential wrecks. And so sometime during the summer, we had a meeting with the residents of Glen Laurel. Some of you were in attendance to that, and tried to discuss a compromise that would satisfy the ability for them to operate golf carts on town streets out there. And these gentlemen with me, Lieutenant LaQuire and Captain Temple, which I think everybody knows, we sit down and started kind of polling other municipalities to hack off car ordinances and came up with somewhat of a compromise from what we had read and kind of what we think might work here. And decided to start with the Glen Laurel community, although I suspect that other communities will ask for this as we go forward. And that is actually written into the ordinance on how we will handle that, and that will be your decision, obviously. If you have any questions about the current ordinance, and I don't know if there's a way to put it up there or not. But this is basically the same ordinance that you looked at before. I sent it to Jim, and he looked over it and blessed it. And I think this will work for us. We are in the process of trying to get decals here so we can, when these golf carts are registered, that we will have a way to identify which ones have been registered in case we get calls over there. So we, you know, we'll have a database set up where we can identify the owner and all the applicable North Carolina general statutes will apply. As I said before, this is just, there'll be some bugs I'm sure we have to work through as any kind of new ordinance is put into place. But we will deal with it as we go. The only thing I would ask is, I know this is set for the December 15th agenda to be approved. I would only ask that it would begin January 1st just to give us a full calendar year, because the way this is set up, that when they register a golf cart, it will be in three-year yearly increments. And then anybody who adds one on during that first three years, it will be prorated. There'll be a $300 fee upfront for them to register to cover our costs. And hopefully, this will help alleviate some of the issues we have had. Anything y'all want to add? You have any questions, anything that we can discuss? Feel free to ask.
Mr. Case.
I have a couple. Thanks, Greg. I know that y'all looked at a bunch of different ones throughout different municipalities. So since the police are inspecting these for the registration, is there any type of training that they're going to have to go through? Is there any type of training or, you know, knowledge about what they're looking at or understanding of it?
No, I mean, the packet that they will sign and attest to is pretty much self-explanatory. Obviously, there are requirements that each golf cart has to have, which is in compliance with North Carolina general statute. It's all in the ordinance. Like I said, there will probably be some bugs we have, you know, worked through, and we will, since it's new. But I don't think it's anything we can't overcome.
Yes, sir.
And we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, thank you. And then, under the penalties, well, maybe just, maybe briefly touch on that a little bit. So, I mean, they could, there's criminal penalties possible, and then there's also other fines possible. So, I mean, they could get us, like a speeding ticket? Or, I mean, what kind of fines or penalties could they, or is there anything outside of like a typical motor vehicle or?
Well, when the General Assembly passed the criminal justice reform bill, I guess, three or four years ago, and Jim and I worked together on it. There's language in there about ordinances, criminal violation, that you can't charge of both. So you take the most punishment they can get. You just have to state that. And we will, as we go forward, make sure that we're in compliance. I think we are, but that's maybe something I have to reach back out to Jim about just to make sure that if we charge them with a criminal offense or a ordinance violation, to make sure we're not violating.
Somebody else pointed this out to me, but one of the things under the penalties, it said something about, you know, if they're in violation, they may be grounds for the inability to renew the registration. But I would think, if it makes sense that we need to look at, they violated so many penalties that they need to get their registration just withdrawn or rescinded or so.
Yeah, I think some of that may depend on what the violation is. But, but yeah, I think we can figure that out and work through that.
And then two last things real quick. I know that there's another community that's already interested in looking at a golf cart ordinance. Do we, do we have any type of, and I know we don't necessarily have to talk about that today, but is there any type of timeframe where we want to give them a trial period to see how it goes and then roll it out to potential other communities?
I think the way we worded it, they will have to file a, some type of petition with the town to create it for their community. And obviously, we'll look at it. It will be ultimately your decision on whether or not you adopt it. But yeah, that's in there, and we'll have to work through that as that comes. But I, I don't disagree. It's coming.
Yeah, I know, like maybe six months or, you know, whatever we feel comfortable with or we think it's, feels like it's been hammered out well enough to where we could.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll work through it. I don't have a specific timeframe. I guess, the biggest thing for me is, I don't think initially, it's going to depend on how many actually register, because what I suspect will happen is that the majority of them will start getting registered about May when school starts to get out. That is a golf course community, obviously, so there are golf carts everywhere over there. And we're just trying to put something in place to regulate so we just don't have the chaos we, we have had and the complaints that we've had. And the, the biggest issue, again, is juveniles operating golf carts, and it's specifically states in there, and it's a law. And they'll have to comply with that, and if they don't, then we'll have to do what we need to do to either revoke their ability to use it or, you know, these are things we'll, we'll have to work through. I don't know how much to expect. It's kind of hard to speculate on, you know, what we will see, but I think it's a start. It's a compromise that the town and community, you know, which we told them we would look at, and we have. And I'm just hoping it works. And I, you know, I feel like it will. But it's not foolproof, so, I mean, we'll have to work through whatever, you know, issues come up.
Yeah, I understand. I appreciate your time. You know, obviously, everybody's time on that. The last thing I have to add is, I know that some of the, some people reached out to me, and they were hoping that there would be a, like a community onsite registration, maybe once a year or so, if it makes more sense for that to happen versus them maybe driving their golf cart or trailering their golf cart up to the police station. I don't know if that's something y'all thought about, but it might be something worth considering as this kind of rolls out.
Yeah, we're not, they're basically, based on the way we looked at other ordinances in other communities, they're signing an estatation to show that they are in compliance. And then, before they can get the decal, they have to show that they are in compliance, which means insurance, seat belts, everything that the law requires. If we get out there and we see one that's not, then we'll have to deal with that as it happens. It would just be extremely manpower-intensive for us to inspect every, and I don't know how many is going to, I mean, I have no way of knowing how many will register for this. And if what we have originally agreed to do doesn't work, we'll back up and punt and do something different. But I think this was a better way to at least start, and we'll just see how it goes and adjust as we need to.
Thank you.
Chief, if I could just one more time, just for the general public and everybody to hear. Again, this for operator, the definition of an operator is any person age 16 or over, consistent with the state law. And one of the big concerns that was out there was that there was a lot of underage, unlicensed youth that were driving these. That is still not legal. That is still going to be a problem, no matter what, whether this ordinance is in there or not. I just wanted to reiterate that.
Yes, and pairs can be held responsible for that.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to respond to Councilman Casey's second question. The timing of consideration of any amendments would really be in your purview. This council could, could decide, and you may decide, well, we want four or six months of experience to, before we add anybody. Or you may, it may take several months to actually process an ordinance change. So it would be the council's decision if, if you get another one.
Anybody else? So I just want to touch on the fee structure for just a minute. So it's $300. Once you go through the process and you get a sticker for the golf cart, and then that sticker is good for three years.
Correct.
And then?
It basically comes out to $100 a year.
Gotcha. And I would assume, like, the primary cost is labor, is manpower?
Yes, sir.
So I think this is, I think this is good, and this is fair. Have we thought about when it comes time to, when, when my three years is over, are we, as a town, sending out a notice to say this is getting ready to be no more? Or is that going to be the sole responsibility of the golf cart owner?
Well, if, if you all choose to keep it in place, then we will obviously notify everybody, everyone who's registered that you're, and obviously, we'll do it far enough in advance to give them sufficient notice. But yes, we will let them know that effective January 1st of 2029, your golf cart registration expires, and you will need to renew it. So, yeah, we will notify all those folks.
Thank you, chief. Anybody else? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Up next is the comprehensive list of fees and charges update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Just a really quick update on an item that will be coming to council on the 15th, two weeks from today. Have a few slides summarizing some of the changes that have come out of some of the mid-year review conversations with our departments that happened last two weeks ago. And just a couple of technical adjustments that we need to take care of as well. We have three different areas that we're going to have, we're going to request changes to. Look at that. Okay. Parks and Rec, a fire department and some community development fees. Parks and Rec, we had a couple of just some language we cleaned up in some of the fees. There were a few facility rentals that did not have a non-resident fee attached to those, so we added those. And of course, we have some new facilities with the new construction project at the park for the bocce ball courts and shuffleball courts. We've added some fees so folks can rent those courts for, I think, at least a couple hours at a time. So those are, that summarizes the fees of parks. Fire department mostly is related to some required inspections that, some inspections that we've been required to provide and we have been providing, but we're just adding the fees to allow us to recover some of the costs for those. Now you can see up here some fire inspection fees and a couple of fees that are mandated by North Carolina Fire Protection Code. So we've added those in there as well. Community development, we've added, updated some technology fees that we had as we get more electronic payments and as we shift to our new software clarity, we're going to be taking even more of those. So recover the costs that, that we've been incurred, our increased costs that we've incurred. We've updated credit card fees, e-check fees, and also fees for return checks and things like that. Application permit fees, some of those as well. We've updated the language mostly on a lot of those. Yeah, I do have another slide. Okay. We've updated multiple notices for code enforcement. So things like if, if code enforcement is, if someone is noticed for a code enforcement violation more than once in 12 month period, we have dated a fee for that. Copies and maps, this was just a duplicative entry. We had it in a couple places in the, in the list, so we're going to remove those when I'm listing all the changes here. Inspections and reinspection fees, you said it's some clarity around that, updated some some of these building inspections that, that happened a fourth or fifth time. Those fees were updated as well. We're getting into like four or five and beyond attempts at inspections. And just improved some language around zoning permit and application fees. We had some, one of the places I'm thinking, we had some, some application types that weren't really clearly spelled out. So we made that change to make it a little more clear on the list. So again, this is coming, this will be coming to the town council meeting on the 15th. We will get you, the list isn't really formatted to where it's easily read at this point, but I'm working on that. I'm going to get that to you well ahead of the meeting so you can review ahead of time. Any questions about that so far?
That's pretty much it for me. I do want to make sure we get a list of fee schedule and that kind of thing.
Yeah, make sure you get that. So to Todd's point on that, the current fee schedule and Mayor, you probably remember several years, going back seven or eight years ago now. We had a 46 page fee sheet. There was an attempt to consolidate it and make it a little more streamlined. We've tried a couple iterations of that, but I think Todd's got a new format that likely moving forward, you guys will see that should be very, very clear in terms of what the fee is, what department or where it's being born out of. And then whatever the current fee is, and then that way too, as part of the comprehensive, as part of the annual budget process, any comparison for fee increase requests, it'll be a column right next to it. So don't freak out if it looks a little bit different. Happy to sit down with you guys to kind of compare apples to apples from the previous sheets, but trying to streamline that, make it a little bit more user friendly for both, you know, the general public and for us as a tool, as part of the budget. And then last but not least, some of these fees do technically impact quote unquote development. By the state statutes, those fees are required to be publicly noticed. So I believe that notice will be going out next couple of days in the newspaper, but just wanted to make sure it's clear. Many of those changes, like Todd said, there's a lot of them are just clarifications on how many reviews your fee includes and that kind of stuff, but just want to make sure everybody's up to speed on that. Thanks. Yeah, Heidi confirmed that the public notice has been, has been put out there. So for the public hearing. I do want to say to Rich's point, for sure, we're trying to transition between that older format into the new one. So there's a little bit of, you know, weirdness there. But I do want to say that our communications department did build an incredible tool on our website. You can search for Town of Clayton comprehensive list of fees. There is a searchable table that'll show up when you click that link. You can just start typing the type, the kind of fee that you're looking for and it will eliminate everything. It'll only, it'll sort by that word. So like a good example is pool inspection, you know, if you're putting the pool in, you have to get inspected. If you start typing pool inspections, it'll eliminate every list, every fee on that list with the exception of like two or three lines. Really good tool that, that is a lot easier to use than what we're going to send you guys in the next two weeks. So.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Todd. Do you guys want to keep rolling?
Yeah.
So going on to items for discussion would be the CIP projects update.
All right. Chris makes his way up here. This is a continuation of some of the, well, the presentation Chris was doing at the retreat a couple of weeks ago. I think he's going to do a quick summary of maybe kind of some of the stuff we went through during those couple of days or those, that day. And then get, get into a little bit more detail on some of the other projects that we did not get to from an update perspective. I'll let you explain what the sheet is. Go ahead.
Okay. I provided a listing of all the projects that will kind of go through, just so you can see a preview. So you're not just kind of seeing it as it's coming up on the slides. You kind of know what projects we'll be talking about. But yeah, as Rich mentioned, yeah, that's, that's all correct. And yeah, so I'll, I'll kind of move my way steadily through it and kind of zip through the initial ones. Because there's quite a few projects on there. It's not all the projects we have going on, but it's a good, good chunk of them. So as I kind of mentioned in the retreat, I had them kind of formatted in a way that we went through the most critical ones first. So it was really top priority projects, locally administered projects, and then I kind of categorized everything other. But our intent for today is to kind of go through everything. So top priority, the Hoka Ellington Library renovation. So that one is going well. It's under construction. It's slated to be April to be completed in the construction phase. And then kind of move in, you know, be final completion by May or June. So we did walk this one as part of the retreat event. It was pretty exciting to do that as a group. And I think it was probably the day after or so, they started putting sheetrock up. So it's already changed dramatically. All the walls are kind of starting to close in on it. So it's, it's great. And so once we kind of have all the sheetrock muddied, everything, we'll start seeing those finishes, prime paint, millwork. So it'll be really exciting. We'll make sure to get some good pictures and everything we can distribute. These are just the renderings from the, the project. These have been released to the public. They've been out there for a while. I think they're even in the lobby at one point. Kind of showing all the spaces. Southwest Public Safety Center. So this one, we are right now in design and actually from when we met, we were waiting on the DD packet to come through. And shortly after that, we got a hundred and some page drawing set. So furiously trying to go through all of that and look through it. And I know Chief Rains and I talked, need to have some time to kind of go through all the details of it to get back to our consultant. But that one's rolling on really well. So, I mean, we've gotten, you know, up to schematic drawings, design development. We've gotten our geotechnical site investigation completed. So it's, it's rolling on. We'll be going into the site plan, CD submission phase of it with the drawings that we have and then the construction drawing package. So that, that's one that we're looking to bid summer 2026. It'll take about 14 months to build and so be winter, kind of 27 and early 28 we're looking at. And then these are just the, the images from the packet. They were really from the SD packet where we were provided with site plan and renderings. So these were seen kind of before. So that's the front kind of view from Veterans Parkway. Kind of a backside view, more facing Short Johnson Road, looking kind of at the back parking lot, the facility. And that's a complete back view of the parking lot in the back of the facility. And we have some floor plans here. You know, red is fire, blue is police. The yellow is kind of a shared space. So it's 24,000 square feet, two stories. So this is the first story of the building. Second story, really pretty much dorm rooms for the fireside. That's essentially up there and showers. West Horn Street. So that one is the fire station one that's known as. So we're going to be doing expansion and renovation to that project. So this one's kind of tracking along, you know, summer bidding as well and, you know, final completion of fall 2027. So this one, we've gotten through schematic. We've also gotten our design development plans. We have the same thing as Southwest Public Safety Center, where we have a good sizable set with a lot of details, still going through all of it. We also have a design development cost estimate, so we're tracking well on that. And then so kind of the next stage will be getting into construction drawings and, and the site plan and CD submittals. So that one's progressing very well. And I put a screenshot of just the nine dorms. These will be really relocating the dorms and improving the facility and getting it right adjacent to the apparatus base. So that will help in response times. Fitness Center is really relocated. So there's a couple of rooms here that would be relocated really to the expanded area. And then renovating this, the existing space, renovating the spaces where, the spaces we've been moving out to improve operations with the training room, conference kind of area. The current dorm areas would be turning into administrative offices. So administrative staff can be housed in this building. Clayton North Public Safety Center. So this one, we had talked about, we've, we went through a few preliminary things, but in general, it's waiting on a pond that's onsite to be drained. The US Corps of Engineers was, told us we could drain it. And it's a manmade pond, just to see if we can recoup any space on this land. It would greatly benefit our layout on the station and the site. So that's kind of the next step. We should be very close to starting that process. It's being drained today apparently, I was told. So that's great. But once we get that down, we'll have to wait a period of time and then we'll probably get a wetland assessment, a delineation done and we can see if we've recaptured that land or not. And so that's just kind of the image. It shows the, the pond, you know, on that property. So it's a sizable amount. If we can capture any bit of it back, it will be very beneficial. The community park maintenance building. So this is the one piece of the Clayton Community Park project that was remaining to do. So it's, right now at this point, it's like a 95% drawing set. It still needs to be reviewed fully. Some comments, there's, there's some adjustments that I know that need to be made. But then shortly after that, we'll be ready for, to get in for a site plan, CD submission and permit review and such. So this one's kind of tracking along, same thing, early 26, you know, summer 26. It's not, it won't be a very long duration project. It's a prefab metal building kind of style with some brick on the front. And, you know, a simple outfit, outfit inside. So it should be relatively quick. This is kind of showing the location of the building. Pickleball courts are to the left at Clayton Community Center. And so the building is going to be on that stone pad to the right of it. Kind of first floor of this, you know, it's really pretty basic, you know, maintenance kind of area for mowers and such that they have large training room, you know, superintendent office for several of the staff. And so it's really just a little bit of office space and some workshop area. And then there'll also be a storage kind of area up top. It'll be a mezzanine. So it's a partial, partial floor. So Donald Clyde Sinclair Park. So this one, this one, we have a playground that's going to be replaced in this. It's more of a CPP rather than a CIP because we're using some saved funds that's been saved over several years. But it's all part of a whole improvement of that area. And so the playground itself should be installed. It looks like around December should be completed is what I've last heard. And so that will be upgraded, but there's also ADA upgrades that need to be done. So I know there's some discussions with the church, adjacent church for, you know, the parking lot and, you know, figuring the details of that will be important because that will kind of dictate ADA parking, what possibilities we have there as well as routes, right? Because there'll need to be sidewalks that are poured. I think the basketball court kind of is downgrade quite a bit. So there'll be some kind of ramp and such that has to be poured. So we kind of need to figure out what our options are first with partnerships and then we can kind of back into some solutions. And these are just the renderings. These were publicly shared, just kind of for the playground equipment itself. Surfacing is, is remaining. Yeah, I have not swung by there just recently. So that's great to know. So the equipment's in, but the surfacing still needs to be done. And then locally administered projects. So these are DOT type projects where there's a share in funding. So this one's been around for a little bit, East Main Street Sidewalk Connector. So this one, we have 100% design drawings. It's kind of tied to a parking lot that's, that's along that stretch as well. So NCRR is, is involved in, in approving and reviewing the drawing. So there's two sets. You'll see the next slide. They interrelate together. But in general, so what's upcoming is really getting the construction funding authorization and the, the plan approval. I know it's all kind of in process, but we're tracking for like a spring 2026 to bid it. And then be completed by winter 2026. So it's not a very long duration project. It's mostly sidewalk, right, on each side and, and a parking lot. But it's a, a good cost share with the Campo and NCDOT. Again, this is the East Main Street parking lot that's correlated with it. So you'll see what we'd like to do is where it says final completion fall, to have that kind of completed beforehand. So that should be done earlier. But in general, it's going to track the same timeline because it's going to be in the same bid packet and go out together as a package. So it'll be a intermediate kind of contract time for this particular piece of it. So I think it's 18 or 19 spaces. It's a gravel lot. There will be concrete poured at the handicap parking spaces. So we achieve compliance in that aspect, but it should be pretty straightforward in general. The Clayton Connector in Robertson Street. So that is along Amelia Church that goes up South Robertson and down West Main Street. So this one is right now submitted at 65%. So we have that in for NCDOT review. So it's going through the process and at 65%, that's usually when you do your right away acquisition. So that funding authorization is, is ongoing right now. And so once we kind of get everything back, we'll be rolling into that right away acquisition phase. There's quite a few properties here. It probably will take a little bit of time to get through all that. But we are looking to kind of bid summer 2027. And it'll take, you know, a little over a year, it looks like for this project. It's, it's a good stretch. It's got multi-use path, sidewalk along it. There's, you know, lots of crossings and such. So there's quite a bit of work that's involved in this one as a transportation pedestrian type project. And then Main Street pedestrian improvements. So this one is kind of also interlinked with the previous project time wise. So this one, I know Rich had, had reached out to council and, and provide kind of an update on this one where there were roadway improvements or traffic improvements as well as pedestrian improvements. We met with the community through a stakeholder engagement. We had received some feedback. The concern was parking, right? engagement. We had received some feedback. The concern was parking, right? And the bulk of the parking that was being affected was through the roadway improvements. So the approval of this kind of has to follow a timeline or we'll lose the funding. So, you know, according to what Rich had sent out, you know, we were proceeding with at least preserving the pedestrian improvements because the pedestrian improvements itself will be a much greater or much smaller parking loss, much smaller. I think it was around like six or something like that versus 20 some, right? So, so that, that way we can preserve, get, get the funding for this, enhance safety. But along with it, recognizing that there's some additional information that would have been nice to have. We, we had a 2007 parking study that was done that looked at all downtown. It looked at the amount of parking that we had and the utilization of that parking. And so we're going to start engaging for, to get another parking space analysis and utilization done. That would probably better serve us for any future project, even if the roadway improvements came as another phase at some point, we'd be better informed, be able to make decisions going forward, anything on Main Street, really. Did that cover everything, Rich? That you wanted to?
Yeah, I think, as Chris was saying, this, the, this project and the pedestrian improvements with this and the previous one that were just noted, our intent is to try to put those both out on the street together. We've actually had asked for some extension of time from Campo in order to be able to utilize the, or to gain that, that efficiency by putting those both out. So while we work to figure out how we can make some of those transportation improvements as well as solve the parking question, to be able to move forward, the pedestrian project will be the primary focus of design so that we can marry these two up and look at those transportation improvements as part of another project as a follow-up.
So as long as on the topic of Main Street pedestrian improvements, the other day I noticed at the end of Second Street, at the corner of City Florist, there are handicap accessibility, right, is carved out and everything. So is the, the south side, like when you go across the street. But there's no pedestrian marking right there. And I saw a lady with a baby stroller. And she was good going out, but somebody coming from east to west, they had to hit the brakes and slow down. But I'm just not sure if, while we're doing some of this or whatever, if we can get in touch with NCDOT. Because that, that's a, you know, if you come in, if you, if you live over at the Mill or near Luna Pizza and you come into Clayton, there's a sidewalk on that north side, take you all the way down to TR Lee's, wherever, come back all the way down. But to try to get back over, there's no painted pedestrian lane. And I just think we should look at that because I see that it's used.
Right. So this, the intersection of Second and Main you're talking about, I believe that has been reviewed as part of the East Main Street Sidewalk Project. I don't have that in front of me exactly right now, but we'll definitely look to make sure that that's included.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
The Southern Connector. So that's one that we are at the very early stages for. It's on the top priority kind of list for projects as well. And so there was a lot of kind of preliminary information that we've done, such as, you know, talking to Federal Highway Administration and different jurisdictions DOT about this one. Because originally, we had it in the CIP as two segments. We had, I believe it was Ranch Road to maybe Champion or somewhere around there. Then there was a segment that went to Dairy Road. For this to be a LAP eligible project, it has to meet what they call independent utility and it has to connect between certain streets. So we had a lot of conversations about, you know, what needed to be done for it to essentially be fundable. And for it to be fundable is the route that we're showing right here to kind of go from Ranch Road and to actually connect all the way back over to Barber Mills. So it's a longer stretch. However, what we can do is, we're planning to submit for 80/20. If we do an 80/20 and kept that, we would actually keep our cost of the share the same as the previous projects that we had combined together in our CIP. So we'd kind of work out and wash out from that perspective. So we've submitted an application, see if we can get 80/20 for our design portion of it. Keeping in mind, this is a very large project. So this, it will happen over time. It's not like a two-year project. So I include the schedule in the next slide that I'll go through quickly. But yeah, so we're in that. We'll probably only hear in the new year if it's approved or not through Campo. And so this will be, you know, like a four-lane road median, you know, there'll be pedestrian kind of components to it. So it'd be a good interconnection that we made. There is some of this right away that already has right away dedication in it because it was part of the subdivision that was in there. I think Cobblestone has segments in there. So we'll be obviously utilizing what we have. And so as you can see, $43 million is the total project. So our share will be 20%. And then this just kind of shows, I just did, you know, a project schedule, Gantt schedule that goes through all the phases. But just to highlight the construction kind of piece, the very last line, and we're talking 2031 to 2034. So this is, you know, coming up immediately, but we got to go through all the steps, go through the funding authorizations, right away, design to get through the whole project. So good for planning purposes and, you know, we'll see where we land in the, the new year with them. Okay, so parks, so other park kind of projects. So this one, I did a presentation probably a couple of months ago during council for Legend Park. So this one, they should be wrapping up the state portion of it. That is the landfill remediation piece of it. The state is taking care of that project with Terracan and SSNR, I believe. And so really, at this point, they're just kind of taking out steel fence, cleaning up, filling the pond in, restoring the, the buffer area. So for us, our construction contract that's been executed, so waterline is currently going in. So the roadway construction has begun. It probably will land 2025, early 2026. We got a little bit of a late start on it, but things seem to be going well out there. And then as part of that, once the roadway's in, the greenway will be reinstated and the actual park will be open to public because then they'll be able to access the parking lot from that street that's going in. There's a little bit of utilities, but, but overall, it's not a, a very large project. And that's just kind of a, I think that was in October. So it's probably a couple of months behind, but just kind of shows you the site. To the left is where City Road is. And then to the right where you see where that, all that dirt is, that's where they filled in the sediment basin that they had in there, just for their temporary measures. East Clayton Community Park, second exit and parking. So this one, this is a park that was done under the bond money. And so there was a segment that, that was left out that we were exploring to see if we could add in at this point. So we've engaged with a consultant. We've gotten kind of site surveying done. We've gotten some early concept and layout and a concept package with a cost estimate. And so it's about a million dollars to put in the parking connectivity with the greenway and as well as the roadway for the exit. And I can kind of show you. So what they came up with, it's a good amount of spaces, 150 extra spaces in there. And then you can see on the top part where there's a one-way road. So you can exit from there. And then we made sure to kind of connect everything in with all the existing pathways and sidewalks that are out there. So early in design, but we're looking to kind of fine tune it and, and get it to a final product. I don't think the construction piece of it is funded, but, but this is at least kind of getting some momentum on, on a project that's, I think the public and everyone sees is, is an important thing. Stormwater, just wanted to quickly hit on this one. I know we had Black and Beach come in to do a presentation on the downtown stormwater assessment. At this point is considered completed. But, you know, I just wanted to highlight one more time. It's $400,000 total for the project. It was completely grant funded. So it did not cost town of Clayton taxpayers any money. It was state, state funded. So we got a lot of really good information from this. You know, we got a whole comprehensive, you know, stormwater system development, condition assessment, you know, asset management, H&amp;H modeling for the area, at least a small, you know, a simple, simplistic version of it. Some initial capital improvement planning. And we closed out with a presentation. And so really now it's at the point, it's, it's to be actionable, right? There's, there's items that are in there that you can probably continue discussing and, and extract from there and, and take care of the system and build a program. So they, part of this, they had some structural results. So these are, you know, structural deficiencies that need to be taken care of. It could be, you know, missing grout or, or, you know, pipes that are cracked or, or something. It's not complete failure, but it may be some touch up that needs to happen. O and M is really the cleaning piece of it, right? So if, if there was clogs or anything that, that they noticed was, was starting, so they kind of rated on that scale. So they provide us that information. It'll be very helpful for Public Works to utilize this as a starting point and, and carry this forward. And then with it, they had several different recommendations on this, you know, critical structure repairs, you know, hotspot and cleaning for O and M to target those key areas, doing targeted CCTV. That's something that, you know, routinely should be done to check condition. And, you know, so much every year. That's kind of typical. Capacity concepts and pre-design, you know, access remediation, the stormwater management plan stuff. And then, you know, in general, they just recommend continuing the H&amp;H model. What we got was a very simplistic model. It wasn't, you know, fully, there was a lot of assumptions that were baked into it, but it's a good starting point and it's good information that we never had at all before. So, and we've already started using it on one of, the next project that I'll have up to get the consultant, when we make decisions based on a stormwater project, make sure that we're not carrying that water fast down to the next point that's going to cause issues somewhere else, right? So we're kind of looking at it as a system aspect. And then, you know, continuing this effort, you know, that's what their, their pilot townwide expansion category was, was just saying, continuing this beyond the designated area that we had. So this is the project I was referencing, Church Street Culvert Replacement is kind of a, maybe a legacy project. I think this was started in 2019 or so, maybe around when COVID happened. It, it got designed to a 90%, kind of went on pause, but now it's time to revive it and then get it to the finish line. So we've brought this back. Again, we've got some funding that's more of a CPP kind of item where we also have money that's designated for these kinds of type of improvement projects that would be beneficial. So we're updating the design to be with our current MSSD because since that time, our MSSD changed. And we still, we had to go through a pre-application, all that, TRC review and create a bid packet. But with it being 90% along, we're pretty far along in the design process. We have to do some easement acquisition for a little bit of drainage easement on four properties. And so that's got to start soon. We've got some exhibits. So we'll start engaging these property owners very soon. And so this one, be very short duration. It's only a few months. It's not, you know, a significant timeline. And that's kind of the section of Church Street that you can see where it dips down. That's where, that's where the, the stream is. And so this is an image from what's currently in there. There's a, several pipes that are in there. I'm not too sure why it kind of ended up like that. But so it's relying on all these concrete, or the metal pipes and, you know, some PVC in there and, and concrete. So we're going to remove all that, clean it up, and it's going to look with one large pipe that kind of transfers all that flow through. And we're also going to armor everything around with stone because there are erosion issues on the banks of this. So, so that should fix all those issues. Jumping into water and sewer. So this one, so Atkinson and Second Street. So this is a water sewer replacement project that we did. It's, it's at the tail end of it. We still have as-bilts to do. The surveyor, I believe, was out there taking the shots and everything. And we've got, just still waiting on the drawings themselves. But so overall, we were able to replace the water and sewer on Second Street. In Atkinson, we were able to do the water main. First Street, we did some sewer work out there. And then just a little bit of water that was probably for services, I believe we did. And North Church Street as well, we did some repaving there. It just simply made sense. And just kind of run through each of this. I took a screenshot where you see the, you know, dark black asphalt that's on there. So you know that that was newly done. So, so that's the section of Second Street from Hardy over to Lombard that we, we took care of, improved all that. And then Atkinson, that whole kind of length that goes from Moore up to West Main Street, as well as there was West Horn, I believe, was the one that was done as well, as part of this, as a package. And so this is really water, mostly in this one. This one was some old asbestos concrete pipe that was in there and was starting to give troubles. You know, they always say asbestos concrete pipe. It's a great pipe if you don't touch it. You know, that's really what people say. So it was starting to give us trouble. So we ended up replacing the whole line. First Street and Church. So this one, we redid the sewer in First Street. That one was well overdue. It was, it's had a good life. I think it was 1911 is what the GIS said on it. But again, it's not just age, it's, you know, condition of pipe, right? So there's many factors that gauge in what sewer, what water we actually replace, right? It's, it's a methodology that you got to go through. So this one was starting to cause issues. And so it was time to replace this segment. There was also a manhole that, that needed added in to allow water resources to care for the system better, since methodologies kind of changed over time. And with Church Street, we also went and paved that. The utilities were good in that street. It's, but with the intersection at first in Church, it was kind of very lumpy. It was very hard to tie that in. And then once you kind of fix the intersection, you have to go so far out North Church. It just kind of made sense to just simply take care of it. It was a pretty poor rating on the PCI index for our street resurfacing. So it made sense to throw that one in and, and take care of that one. Blanch and O'Neal in Ellington. So this is another one that was around that 2019 time period that was partially designed. It was up to a 65 or so. I think we had got left off and we've brought it further along. But we want, pick this one back up and continue this. It's more of a water sewer type project. However, it makes sense with the amount of water sewer that's in there and the services and everything. You're chopping the whole street up. It made sense to redo the street itself. And this area also kind of lacks good sidewalk connectivity. And so I think originally, when it was originally designed, the thought was just kind of bundle everything together and kind of improve that whole area. So, so we're moving along on that one. The easement acquisition process is ongoing. Permits are being updated. And we're also coordinating with the high school on this one as well because along Ellington, since that time, Clayton High School is getting renovated or rebuilt. And so they have to tie in some sewer along there. They've got some work that they have to do. So trying to see if we can work together along on that, coordinate our schedules for each project and make sure no one's doing work twice. And so this one, we're looking to kind of bid early 2026 and finish by spring 27. And so I've got some of these screenshots. This is from the standard DOT plans. Add some labels just to kind of give a reference of, of the street. So this is really South O'Neal. You'll see sidewalk that's in there. There's utilities that are not shown on this, but you'll see how kind of we're connecting from Horn to Blanch that it's going to. And then this is West Blanch, with a little bit more sidewalk. We've got some drainage that's going along there. That's the, the black line that you see at the top. So there's a little bit of stormwater that's included. And then for South Ellington, there's some additional sidewalk that kind of interconnects everything with handicap ramps for crossings and such. So like I said, mostly a water sewer project, but there will be these extra benefits to interconnectivity, filling in gaps. A lot of the sidewalk along here too is four foot or so. It's very narrow. So some of the segments, if there, there were segments of sidewalk that were placed, it wasn't a, a large amount. So we'll replace those and bring them up to standards. So a nice five foot evenly throughout. Star Mount Liberty in West Main Street. So this pump station decommission project. So this one is associated with some grant funding through the state. There's some funding that's, that's associated with water and sewer. I know there's, we have $40 million or so of projects involving this. We don't have $40 million of funding, but it will soften, you know, and some of these projects will, will be divvied out. This is one of the projects that will receive some of the money through a state appropriation, I believe it was. So this one, we've got 100% construction drawings, all the permits received and easements are required. And so right now, we just got to get this in the DWI for a submittal so they can review it so we can be ready to bid. So we'd like to get this one out early 26, finish it by spring 27. And so in the image- And so in the image, you can see on the right, that's the Starmount subdivision and on the left, that's where like West Main, Liberty and all that are kind of all together. So this will involve decommissioning and removing two pump stations, or three pump stations on this total. One in Liberty, one on Main Street and one in Starmount. And they're all aging pumps and so it's a good thing to get, get them out so we don't have to replace them because gravity sewer became available and that's what kind of pushed this project along. We can actually send everything through gravity and get rid of these pumps. So operationally, it's fantastic. Walnut Creek Sewer Improvement. So this is another transmission type project that's out there. So this one involves a few subdivisions that are out there, Glen Haven, Walnut Creek, Walnut Creek and Winston. They're all kind of tied together. There's a couple of pumps, pump stations that are here that we'd be getting rid of. It will all connect to, again, a new development country lane that's there. There was a developer's agreement that went through council many months ago that involved with country lane, their subdivision to upgrade the pump station so it could be a regional sized pump station so it could handle that whole area. Again, reducing the amount of aging infrastructure that we have and regionalizing it with better stuff for emergency backup and such because that's the challenge with some of these pump stations. They may not have all the emergency equipment. And so there's a kind of a thought of, do we spend the more, more money and upgrade them for this? Or do we just simply build something new that has all this equipment and so water resource can confidently take care of everything? And so this one, we've got 30% design. We've got preliminary easements kind of drafted up so we kind of have an idea on alignment with a construction cost estimate, technical memo that describes, you know, thoughts on, on how the engineering should work. So we're in the process of getting a task order so we can keep this run rolling into a 65% design. Then we can get into easement acquisition, then we can finalize design and go into permitting. So this one's kind of tracking more at, at this point, you know, bidding 27 spring, final completion 2029. That, that's a rough timeframe that I have out there, but we got to get back into it and see how quickly you can kind of move through this one. It's a very important project, so we, we want to make sure we prioritize. And so this is a $7 million project approximately. And so this kind of just shows, there's really two segments. So there is a piece that we see Glen Haven Pump Station between, there's a gap. So there is some sewer that we can tie in and, and still use. So it's really two segments that we're, we're doing that are separate from each other that will connect the whole system together. West Clayton Sewer Improvement. So this is another one that is out at the hospital, Johnson Memorial Hospital kind of area. So this one, we've just done some site surveying. Technical memo has been completed to kind of help us with an alignment and a project capacity and such. The procurement is kind of in process right now to be able to continue the design. So we're still early, early in on this one, but we marched towards a 30% design. This would also, I believe I have it, the layout here. So you can see where Veterans Parkway kind of, that goes kind of south to north on the, on this or at, and, and then says Highway 70, but that's I-42 that's been renamed. So it's really that kind of piece behind the hospital and along the highway. So you'll see where the yellow box at the top or the middle left, that's where the proposed pump station would be. That's the lowest spot in that kind of area. And the dashed green is where we'd have gravity sewer. And the purple dash, that's where we'd have the force main that would push it back up to where Copper District, up, up to the Veterans Parkway and everything will kind of tie back to Copper District. And so, yeah, it will, it will open up that area for sewer as well as the hospital is having some expansion, so that will aid in that. The Walmart Pump Station abandonment. So this one is again, another opportunity to connect everything together. We've got 100% design drawings. We've got right of way acquisition completed. We have from DWI, we have their tentative packet approval. We are still waiting on our 404 permit through the US Army Corps of Engineers with the federal shutdown. It kind of got entangled in that. We should have had it by now, but since that happened, it's kind of pushed that. So they were able to give us a tentative approval on that while we wait on this permit to, to come through. And then we need to have a final DWI approval once we, we get that in hand and then we can go to bid. So we're trying to push for as soon as possible, winter kind of 25, you know, beginning of the year, we got to get this one out. It's another very important one to, to complete. So some general site improvement projects. This one is on the top 10 or the top projects that we have for general fund. The Main Street, Street Improvement Project. So that's the whole streetscape kind of type project. There's no real defined timeline on this one. I know it's a very large initiative, but overall, we do have just a general concept that was done years ago of Main Street and we're working on these lap funded projects we talked about that affect this Main Street. So there is work that's happening in the, in the area, but there's going to be continued discussions that are, that are happening with DOT on the roadway ownership transfer terms, right? I know those had happened, you know, started a while back and I believe they're, they're continuing on to try to make some progress on that. It's all kind of key to part of this project. And then, you know, any next steps are kind of engaging consultants to start, start actual design on, on this. But there's minimal work, but there, there's work that's happening on this, this project. This is another long-term, also large project, you know, figure on it. I, I think that's the roadway improvements. There's utility improvements have to happen with all that. So it's a very large undertaking. First Street roadway and parking improvements. So this one is trying to get a partnership going with the railroad to enable some extra parking along this stretch. We've discussed it with NCR, the general, you know, early concept markup. They seem receptive to it. So we kind of went into a further refine because it was a very rough concept. We kind of refined that. We now have a meeting on the books for Friday, December 5th to sit down with the railroad and look at this furthered concept, talk through it on the possibilities moving forward on this one. And so we'll just really wait for the feedback from them on their concept to see what the next phase is.
Chris, if we could take a moment while we have this image up, something that has come to our attention here recently that we need to move relatively quickly on what the railroad is. Through some of the conversations we've had with them over the last few months, just regarding railroad safety in general, there's actually a pilot program that they're looking to space, to start, that they'd like us to take, take part in. That would be a grant that would allow for safety improvements along the corridor specifically what's, what's been discussed with them would be putting fencing along the corridor at key places. Chris and the staff have looked into it and had several conversations with them. Essentially, they'd like us to apply this week for what would be an 80, 20% grant with their portion being up to approximately $250,000. So effectively, if we put $50,000 in, they'll put in $250,000 towards some sort of pedestrian safety improvements along the corridor. I know that typically we would want to give you guys a lot more information. We do have some information that we've looked at with police and fire to, to be able to determine kind of where we see some of the, the more highly trafficked areas where folks may be cutting across the, the tracks in, in unsafe manners. So we would like to have at least the okay to move forward with at least submitting the application that I believe Chris correctly from wrong, they would like this week.
Yeah.
In order for that. And I'm not sure if the funds are, you know, current fiscal year funds and that's why the, the, the need to move relatively quickly on this. But if we can get consensus from you all, we'd like to go ahead and at least get the application in the door. We can then talk more about where along the corridor it makes the most sense to be able to install those, that fencing. We have some graphics we can show you of the style of fencing that has been approved in the past. For anybody that's been to downtown Garner, they actually have a pretty good example. I think it's a five foot, either wrought iron or aluminum fence. There's a price differential there again. We've done some, some homework on that. So say all that to say, if, if I can get consensus from you all to at least apply for the grant, we can finalize the exact location. But I will say this stretch right here from Lombard, I believe, back to Church, we have identified that as one of the, I guess, with, between us and, and police, one of the more high-risk locations. And so as part of that conversation on Friday with them about the parking, we'd like to at least open the door as to that grant funding and potentially incorporating it into a project that would then put parking as well as the pedestrian safety improvement along this stretch as kind of a, the first part of that pilot test.
Yeah. We need this. We, yeah, because we need this. We need this first street roadway improvement. And I'm happy that we would be able to, you know, apply for a grant and possibly get some good funding to help support that. That would be fantastic.
I'm, I'm good with it. I do have a question. Obviously, I understand the fencing is the priority, but do you know if this grant will consider any type of underpass or pedestrian underpass at any point in time? Have they even talked about that? Is it just strictly subjected to fencing?
Yeah, we, we talked about that in general and we're told basically that's a bigger conversation. We're happy to bring it up again as part of our conversation on Friday, but really this immediate, or this current funding is looking for more immediate impacts than I would say that the tunnel, any pedestrian tunnel project would be a few years in the making at best.
You know, we, we've got some history with that tunnel, right? Like we got funding from the federal government with then Congressman Etheridge and the North Street. The North Side community was not in favor of all of that, so. They have concerns over safety and lighting and all that stuff, so. Well, I think it's still a good idea. We've already traveled that path one time. We were not successful.
I just wonder if there's fencing put up, are they going to feel like they're restricted?
We are certainly, we'll, we'll certainly continue the conversations. I do also want to note that playing north from the north side of the tracks there, there's an existing old stairway. You will, if it hasn't already been done, I know we barricaded it during Harvest Festival, but I think Tim and the public works crew is working on a little bit more robust barricading of that. It was recently brought to our attention by the railroad that that is actually the town stairway through a 1977 agreement, I believe it was. And so as part of all these conversations, we are also bringing that into the, you know, if, if we are fortunate enough to get the final approvals through them to be able to do the parking, plus potentially some, some fencing on both sides of the track. With all that work that would be done in the corridor, we'd like to go ahead and incorporate a project to remove that stairway once and for all, so it's no longer an attractive nuisance for folks to potentially put themselves in harm's way. The, the sections of sidewalk or crossing effectively that were directly over the tracks, that was the railroad's responsibility. Those were removed many, many years ago, but the removal of the stairway based on that agreement is the responsibility of the town. So again, in a perfect world, we'll be able to combine not only the parking here along First Street, the fencing to be able to eliminate the pedestrian hazard or potential hazard as well as take away that, that, what is our obligation to remove the, the stairway. So that would be the totality of what we'd like to see done, I'll say, between Lombard and Church pending further discussions with the railroad.
And I also have just kind of a quick screenshot from some of the parking improvements that are kind of detailed. So we'll have further discussions with the railroad on this and see where this goes.
You know, once those pedestrian stairwell is removed, then what, what's going to be the option for foot traffic? Or is there going to be an option for foot traffic?
Currently, there's not a plan, although I would say that, that crossing is currently not encouraged to be a crossing in current times. That's why we're trying to get, make it clear that that is not an intended crossing. I'd have to look at our pedestrian plan and our transportation plan to see what other pedestrian improvements along Front Street between, or up to Church Street are being, were proposed as part of that, but that's certainly something we could look into as
And then wanted to kind of highlight, you know, a smaller project that, that's very important is townwide kind of monument signage. I think the, this is the first roundem. There's sort of a couple that were done or a few that were done at three, I think Municipal Park, Fire Station Two, and then Sam's Branch also had its sign put up. So just wanted to kind of notate that, that the signs should be kind of wrapped up at this point now. But, and we're going to be, I think, hooking some electrical up. That might be the last little bit that, that's left on it. And then there may be some landscaping going around it, kind of as near, depending on, on the location. But so we're, we're going to keep rolling these out with a new kind of design. And yeah, did you want to mention any doors? I know that you've kind of headed the initiative.
We have two more in the works as well. Sorry, getting used to this. We do have two more signs in development right now as well as making certain that the library project also has a smaller type of sign as well. And then you'll notice that our wayfinding plates have been changed out in just about every location, but two they are up now. And we coordinated with DOT as well as our town public works to get that done through the same vendor in the approved concepts that you approved almost a year and a half ago.
Awesome. Appreciate it. Durham Street Agri Yard. This is a public works kind of improvement type project that's out there. So we've got design drawings, 30% that are completed. We did a neighborhood meet, meeting on this because there's a right of way abandonment that's in, that's in there that we had to, to get rid of. So we've got some additional surveying that's kind of happened based on some TRC comments that came out. So we're really kind of trying to finish the design on this, this one and finalize that recombination. There's also a recombination because this is, this property is kind of four lots or five lots that we, we own. So we're trying to recombine it into one that, that makes sense. And like I say, get rid of that piece of that street that lands on site. This will kind of help public works with a lot of operational stuff for, you know, debris and, and also helping water resources with, you know, stone material, just more efficiency. It's more of an efficiency type project, right? And there, there are some partnerships with this for some fill material. That's why it kind of got a little delayed. There's a large site in town that's, that is looking to give us a lot of fill dirt. So, so we're trying to accommodate that and make sure the design incorporates that fill And then the last one I have here is the Robertson Mule. I know we had talked about this one with Jacobs, but in general, just wanted to kind of highlight the pieces that the engineering department's touching. You know, we had done all the assessments and everything for the, the building, gotten a site survey, completed historical research. Jacobs was doing really the adaptive reuse study piece of it. But right now, we're kind of moving into getting the estimate for the building envelope repairs that are needed and any kind of structural repairs as well so that we can kind of report back on a cost, an interim cost that, you know, that would be recommended to incur. And we're also kickstarting the structural assessment process. So this one, very grateful that we had a grant to cover the actual assessment portion of the structural, structural assessment piece and a little bit of design. So that was a City Works grant or a Electric Cities, I mean, Electric Cities grant. That was like 10 or 15,000, somewhere around there. So every bit helps, so really appreciative of that. So we're getting that going so we can kind of inform council more on the intermediate steps. And that's kind of what we have for, for the Robertson Mule. I believe that's the last slide.
And I did want to update you that from our council retreat, we did take your thoughts back. I've met again with chapel with Jacobs. We'll be incorporating the information that Chris has along with the updates and input you had and be bringing back and next steps in most likely our February retreat to give you some updated information. And then we will bring back in our stakeholders to debrief, talk with them, get more of their input as well as they were integral in this process when we had them chapel here on site from Jacobs.
We're going to follow up with the chamber, I'm assuming, to reach out to Ann for that grant funding that the chamber was able to go through to get their windows replaced and that kind of thing. You already made that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's the last slide I have. Are there any questions or comments or on any of the projects we've gone through? As I mentioned, this wasn't all of them, but it's a good but it's a good sizable amount of them that we have. And I'll continue to adding as we move through the process.
Yeah. Any questions or comments for Chris?
Yeah. Fantastic.
Thank you so much.
Have a quick. Sorry, one of the things I was just excited to see, and I even wrote it down on that East Main Street sidewalk connector um in your drawing, you showed a stoplight there, Central Street and uh
Yes.
Front Street.
Let me go back here.
Excited to see that, you know, going over there, you know, to go to the pizza or post office. So I'm sure the people live in that area. It's uh, that's a challenging intersection, especially during uh busy times. And then plus you got the the complications of the railroad there.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, while you're on the subject of lights, uh, traffic lights, uh, I will say, and I believe uh Jonathan in engineering and Tim in public works are having conversations with DOT. DOT is looking at a larger synchronization of all the lights here in uh in Clayton overall, a lot of the improvements that have gone in. They understand that they've got to relook at the timing and how all of those work in concert with each other. So um, we've heard from you all as well as from some of the public uh regarding some improvements at the different intersections that are that they would like to see from a from a timing perspective. So more to come on that, but I just did want to put it on your radar that there is a larger effort there on the DOT's uh part to be able to get all the lights in our area synced up.
And and that's really good, you know, because I've I've experienced in the last couple of weeks, um, coming back into Clayton on Highway 70 at 42 East. Yeah, it's hard right there, you know, not enough um where the cars can back up to turn left to go out to the bypass, not enough uh on the right for it to just immediate right turn only concept. We really get to look at that.
I'll certainly keep you guys apprised of any any updates we receive from them and uh happy to take any of those suggestions that you guys or the public lets you guys know about.
Awesome.
I just want to say thank you to Chris. I mean, he went through a lot of projects here, folks. Um, Chris and his team are are, they're earning their paycheck every day trying to get these things uh in the ground or or repaired or at least advanced in any way, shape or form. So I just really appreciate him and his team and and all the work that the folks that are involved. Because there are a lot of different departments that have to feed information into these uh into these different projects as well. So I will ask that when we are going through the CIP prioritization for the budget this coming year, which scarily enough, Todd's going to be doing a kickoff for the FY27 budget with our staff this week. Uh, and so um, we will have to have some some conversations just regarding bandwidth in terms of being able to take on any additional project at this point. Several of these projects, Chris, as you heard mentioned, are grant funded. Um, so there are time limits with able to with the uh funds that we need to make sure that we are meeting. And so in order for us to not jeopardize any of those,